I call this April the 4th meeting of the Union County Planning Board. You have in front of you your agenda for tonight for this April the 4th meeting. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Either from the staff or from the members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve is submitted.
All right, we have a motion to hear second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Also in our packet was included the minutes for our December the 6th meeting. I trust y'all have some time to read over this and look at this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
I'd have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, number five. A PUD amendment, a conditional zoning petition for office retail development on 8.55 acres. This property is located at Ray Road within Sandy Ridge Township. Lee, I'm assuming you would like to come forward and address us?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, most of you have had an opportunity to deal with some projects on this PUD over the years. This one is... Sorry, let me turn that screen on so everybody, not the audience, can see it. The site we're talking about is the one that's highlighted there. It's a little bit unique in that it's split zoned. It's split zoned, but it's not split zoned. And I'll kind of explain what that means. You can see where the front piece is kind of a pink color, but it's got a bunch of sixes on it. And in the back of this, it's all just that kind of pink color. The difference is, this front portion, the zoning district on it is a PUD 6, but it's got an underlying use designation of B2. So it kind of aligns with that B2 zoning district. The back portion here is just straight up B2 zoning. This back piece was inside the town of Marvin about a year, year and a half ago or so. And then the legislature deannexed that from Marvin. And this actually came before you guys, I think back in maybe November, December, sometime late last year, to apply... You have 60 days when something like that happens to put zoning on property, or else it's not zoned. So we had 60 days and we kind of looked at what Marvin zoning was, and B2 was the closest to what they had. So we just, we zoned it pretty close to what the town of Marvin had. So that's why you've got those two different designations that are different, but they're kind of the same. What's kind of unique about the PUD 6 is that even though it's got that underlying B2 designation, anytime plans are updated in that PUD 6 zoning district, that has to go through a public process where it comes before the planning board, you guys look at it, and you guys make a recommendation to the county commissioners, almost like a rezoning. And then the commissioners make a decision. So that's kind of a unique thing about the PUD 6. So to get a little bit more specifics on this application, this is actually two applications in one. So you've got the PUD amendment, and you've also got the conditional rezoning since you've got kind of that site-specific plan on this site. So, like I said, you've got the PUD amendment, and you've got a conditional rezoning that are kind of running parallel. But you guys don't need to worry about that parallel part, just the fact you probably need two motions and two recommendations. It's the same project. So I don't want you to dwell too much on the fact that it's two separate things. The proposed use is 35,000 square feet of retail and office. The current site is vacant. There's nothing on this. In fact, it's a pretty, it's kind of wooded toward the back. There's a creek back here, a bunch of floodplain on it. So it's wooded. It's 8.7 acres. The comp plan designates the area near this intersection as a community center small. And what that means is, the community center small is an area that's designated to develop between 125 and 400,000 square feet of space, of commercial space. Those are kind of guidelines. It doesn't have to be, you know, right at 125 or right at 400,000. It could be a little bit below or a little bit above. But that's just a general guideline to say, that's the square footages of development that you could see in these, in those future land use areas. Based on staff's review of the petition, we think that it's consistent with the designation on the plan. The areas around it, across the street, you've got PUD 6, B2. If you zoom out just a little bit so we can get a further perspective. I'm just running a bit slow. You've got B2, that PUD 6, B2, all along here. So just to kind of give you an idea, if you're not familiar with the area, where my house is, there's a Kohl's store there, and there's a CVS pharmacy here. There's some retail stores along Ray Road right there. I think there's a Starbucks and a mattress store, and maybe a cake bakery type store there.
Starbucks.
Starbucks, yep. There's a doctor's office.
This is adjacent to the swim and the stores that we just...
Yep. Yeah, you guys looked at these not too long ago. There's a swim facility here, and a Morning Star storage facility here. And there's a special use permit for this site. They haven't come to you guys yet, but there's a special use permit for this site for a good amount of retail here. This is the old, what we used to call Walmart site.
Walmart.
But it's not that anymore. There's entitlements for other stuff there now. As you move out from that, you've got some residential zoning. This is Somerset Neighborhood, and you've got Hunter Oaks that wraps around and comes through here. This is Amber Meadow, which is in the town of Marvin, and... Canfield Creek is right here, and that's inside the town of Marvin. So all those are residential neighborhoods that kind of surround it. That's one of the other things that it talks about in the community center small is that these centers need to be located in close proximity to some of these existing neighborhoods because it's supposed to be a community-oriented place where people can, from that general area, go and buy stuff. In addition to those things, just based on our looking at the plan, it also supports a couple of the strategies of the comp plan. Since it includes up to 35,000 square feet of building area, that's, some of it's going to be retail and some is going to be office. But the comp plan calls for, it's called Shop 1.0. It's one of the strategies in there. It talks about getting people to spend money in Union County as opposed to going across the line into Mecklenburg. So we feel like this will help in that regard. So we think it's a reasonable request, so staff's recommending to approve it. And I've also got, I don't know how well that's going to pop up on your screen. I can't see it that well up there, but I can zoom in. So this is Ray Road right here, and this is a daycare center that's already in place. This is the access road that goes into the daycare. So you see, they're going to give it access there. And this is possibly already entitled. I'll let the developer get up later and talk about what some of these uses may be. There is an entitlement currently on this piece for a drive-through type restaurant facility. That was done years ago. That's already an entitlement. So you've got, like I said, you've got 35,000 square feet of retail and office. This is a little bit different from the plan, I think, that we put in the mail to you guys. I think the plan that we sent had some square footages on these buildings. What we kind of talked to the developers about was taking that off and putting a cap on this total square footage. That way, we got into this on the piece, on the stuff in front of Kohl's where, you vary on your square footages a little bit sometimes based on what was permitted versus what you can actually do. So they need to shift these square footages around a little bit. That would be okay, as long as the overall design was consistent with what you see here. The buildings are pushed up front, gives it a better, you know, curb appeal. They're putting in sidewalks that connect to the existing sidewalk at the daycare center. Park is in the back, providing a future stub to the property next door. There's a new curb cut here that will provide probably the primary access. When this, well, it could be coming, but this, you know, we had them show that there's going to be a future traffic signal right here. And we feel like that's going to come regardless. And I think it's also important to kind of point out that, just in working with the developers, since this is all B2 back here in this little triangle, some of this stuff could be honestly done by Wright right now if they simply pulled these buildings back and put them in this B2 spot. A lot of this could be done without any public input at all. They could just, they could get permits and just do it. But we had a desire, you know, and I think they did too, to make this look a little better, not to have a city of parking out front, to pull these buildings up closer to the street, which puts it in that PUD 6, which requires this kind of coming through to this public hearing. They did meet with the, some of the adjacent property owners. I know they met with, they have met with the folks across the street, Somerset Neighborhood, and the folks at Amber Meadows. And I'll let the developer talk a little bit more about those meetings. It's my understanding that no major issues were really raised during that. And just got one more. These are some building elevations that were provided. So one of the things we want to make sure of is it's pretty consistent with the buildings that are kind of in the area. They don't have to look exactly like them. You want to vary up the design a little bit, but these are fairly similar to what's already out there. So you're not changing up the design a whole lot. But overall, we think that's a good design for that site.
Lee, the staff report in the application lists property 06222577. I tried to pull up that parcel number on the GIS, and I'm thinking that that's that six?
It was, these two, I think, were... They were two properties on here at one time, and they were combined.
Okay.
So that's probably what's happened.
Yeah, because I think what it shows is, it just shows the entire property. I'm just wondering, you know, because it doesn't come up on the GIS.
They did a recombination plat that came through, and that came through after we received the application. So that's why, that parcel doesn't exist anymore. So that's why that shows up. But it used to be, it used to be that B2 piece, just the standalone B2 piece.
Those, going back to that picture of the buildings, or not that one, the site plan, if you would, sorry. That floodplain at the bottom there, there's no encroachment on that floodplain? That hasn't been adjusted by any kind of recent amendments?
The last amendment that was done to this was a study that the city of, or Mecklenburg County did on Six Mile Creek. And as a result, this stream had to be looked at as well. I think that was done back in 20, we adopted the maps in 2014. They didn't really change. They were, they were still pretty much the same as they were in 2008.
But there's not going to be any kind of footprint or pads or anything that's going to be on the floodplain?
No, no. Our ordinance doesn't allow development in there. There's also buffers on this stream, which they're actually contained within the floodplain itself. So you're not going to touch those buffers. The only kind of development that may occur, and I'm not sure about this, is there, you know, I'm assuming there's probably a sewer tab that's going to need to be made on this sewer line back here, but that's a minimal disturbance if we allow it, so.
It's an honorary issue.
So by right, the bottom part here is B2 already.
Yes, sir.
And then where we saw the original, the P6, that was part of the PUD off of the Somerset and Hunter Oaks PUD from years ago, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's all these...
All the sixes were what was previously a PUD from the two subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
The, I know you talked about this, the, what you call it, a city center, or however you put it. Is there something that would restrict, you know, we approved this, it goes through, they build it, they have a consumer portion of it to all office space? You know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying that they're going to do it, but I'm just saying, you know, if we're looking for it to be some type of city center, then we want people to actually go there to purchase, not just run an office, you know? And I know you talked about a drive-through component to it, and you talked about some other, but is there something that would say, hey, you can't just do all office, you got to have some consumer aspect to it?
I mean, that'd be something, I guess, you could, I mean, there's no breakdown on the existing plan that shows, you know, any maximum amount of office space. I guess that's something that if you guys wanted to, you could probably discuss that with the applicant. But as it stands right now, there's no, there's no breakdown of office persons' reach.
Lee, lack of clarification. Excuse me. The agenda says we're working with 34,000 square feet, 8.55. The zoning staff report says 35,000 with 8.7 acres. Now, for legality purposes of whatever we say or whatever, which are we dealing with?
The, when the agenda was published, we were dealing with a slightly different site plan. It was ones that actually had some square footages listed on the buildings, and we kind of talked to the developers, and they took those off. And we added those up. It came up to like 34,100 square feet, I think. So they took those off, and we just said cap it at 135. That way, there's some flexibility there. So it's really the one that's in the staff report. That came after the agenda was published. It's kind of some negotiation that went back and forth. The acreage, the staff report, I got that from the tax map here. So sometimes you have some discrepancy between the tax map versus an actual survey. What I did here was, this says 8.668. I just rounded up instead of saying 8.668.
No problem with that.
8.668. So that's why, that's why the staff report says 8.7.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further questions for Lee?
We did look at the, this won't trigger TIA under the ordinance. It's not, doesn't generate enough traffic, or the square footage is not big enough. They have been to DOT, they have talked to DOT. Our transportation planners looked at this, and neither entity had any major, any major issues with it.
What, why do we say that there's going to be a red light put in?
It's just, you know, with the combination of this plus what's permitted across the street, you have two driveways that are going to line up right there. It just, it just kind of makes sense for the traffic light.
Is there currently that island left turn?
There is a median right there now, grass median, but there would be a curb cut put in.
Okay. So until the light goes in, this is how they're going to exit and turn left, just through that curb cut?
Yeah, until a light's in and a curb cuts in, it'd just be a right in, right out.
So even if they do develop on the other side, there might be at that time discussions of whether we want a light or something else?
And I think they've got a little bit more information about that that they could probably shed on.
Thank you, Chairman.
At this time, I want to ask the spokesperson for the applicant to come forward if you would identify yourself. And I see there's two entities here, and you can tell us which company you're with.
My name is Steve Vermillion. I'm with MPV Properties. And we have recently closed on the parcel within the last month. The, we bring up the code or something. We just wanted to point out in addition, I guess, to what Lee indicated, this does show that like we have been talking with and had a lot of conversation back and forth between our traffic engineer and DOT. As to the traffic light, the analysis that our traffic engineer has done said the light will be warranted when we develop our space. We are going through, DOT's engineers have had some questions that they've gone back and forth on and trying to get all the information to them that would allow them to analyze it a little more. But my sense is, based on what they're telling us currently, that the light's probably going to be warranted when we go in. It would be our intention to go ahead and install the light as we develop the property. But we do have to get through and go through all that analysis and finish that up with DOT before we could do that. But, so that what Lee said was correct. Initially, it may be just a right in, right out. We think that, given what the engineers are saying and what DOT is telling us, that the light's probably going to be warranted initially, and that we would go ahead and install it. I think the only other thing I really would add to what Lee told you is that, you know, we did, it is approximately eight and a half acres. The only acreage we can develop on is that four acres in the front, which leaves about a 400-foot buffer there, 200 feet on either side of the creek that we have to leave in We would be happy to condition, you know, we would like to probably make sure that some of the uses sometimes cross over between office and retail. You don't know whether they're really, are they retail or are they office? So we'd be happy to, you know, my, our theory, I think, is that we'd be, we probably would do somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 square feet of office. The remainder would be retail. We've created some plaza areas between the buildings that we would, in theory, put restaurants in and do outdoor seating in those plaza areas that you see, those buildings would be our, that's what our hope is, that we could get restaurants in those corner spaces and put outdoor seating there. And just so you know, just to give you some idea, our, we, our principals, all of us were originally involved with, I was president of Crawson Retail, Jim Merrifield was president of Crawson Commercial, and we did all of the office that you see at Blakeney. We did Stonecrest originally. So at least gives you some idea of the type of product that we've done in terms of development in the past. I think Lee covered everything else. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the plan or what we intend to
Any questions? Steve, is he on his presentation here?
Sorry, guys.
Here he comes.
I know, I know. What's, you've talked to the daycare next door, I'm assuming?
Have. She was very supportive. The neighbors that we had meetings with, I don't, I think I could safely say we didn't have any pushback from any of the neighbors. I think they all understood that the property was currently zoned business and ultimately was going to be developed. And I think for the most part, we're, all were happy with our plan. They liked our design, architectural design. And we've, just so you also are aware, that elevation is hard to see, but it is all brick. And we've got a sample somewhere. Do you have that sample on this phone of the brick?
Jordan, I think it's in that same, is it that?
It's in the same, uh...
Yeah, just scroll down a little bit.
Thanks. Yeah, it's a little hard to see. We were afraid you might think that, when you look at the colors, it almost looks like concrete block. So we added that brick sample just to make sure you knew that it wasn't going to be blocked.
The AV doesn't make it look any bad though.
Probably looks better on...
Looks like, what do we call it, faux brick? I'm just kidding.
Has there been anybody that voiced any kind of opposition to the project?
We haven't gotten any calls. At least, we've tried to stay in touch with Lee, and I don't think he's gotten any calls from anybody.
I mean, I've gotten a couple of emails. I had a telephone call today, but there was nothing negative about it. They're just more curious, they may just see a site plan. I had a, I had a long conversation with an area resident today. She was, she seemed like she was fine with it. She didn't have any issues.
I guess the only concern that I have is that you're, if you go a little further south on Ray, you hit that light at that Kohl's, right? That's just below there. So if we get another light, now you've got two lights stacked in, you know, what, 300, 400, 500 yard, whatever it is. You know, I guess at the end of the day, it's a DOT issue.
Yeah, I think ultimately, there's going to be a required light here due to this development here. You guys know as well as I do, there's two runs as planned and ultimately plans to develop. And that is, this lines up with what would be their main interest into, I think, I know the DOT has already required the light to be installed, in particular when this development goes in. And that's why we've worked with them, trying to locate it exactly the same point where that access point into that scene.
And that's why we didn't have as much concern about the light issue because while the project across the street has not come to you guys for that PUD amendment yet, they did have to get a special use permit from the Board of the Justice. And they did show a traffic signal there. They showed that street alignment. And DOT has looked at it and said, yeah, this is built, that light's going in. So with this development here, we weren't as concerned about it because the, I mean, a project across the street, like I said, it's still got a step to go, but they do have the special use permit in place, and that light, you know, DOT says they need to have it come from that go-to end, so.
Is that, street not also go into the neighborhood? Is that not an outlet? Or is it going to be an outlet whenever they develop this?
You kind of have to make a job, but what's on the plan now, yes, it does go back into the neighborhood. And I think it's going to be gated, so it won't be, it won't be a full movement. There will be gated, adversity vehicles will have access to it.
All right.
And then the community will figure out they like it, and then they'll still gate off.
I understand.
Until then, it'll be gated.
You know, one of the things that drives me insane, is there any way for the DOT to time the lights? I mean, I'm serious. You know, I mean, there's...
They do, they do.
Yeah, there's, you know, I know up, and I hate doing this, but I know up in Buffalo, I love Elm Street because you hit that first light, as long as you go 32 and under, you're going to keep going. You know, I mean, God, can somebody tell DOT to time the lights if you're going to put in a light there? Could that be...
We can certainly request that.
It's too simple, Chris.
I know.
It's too simple.
Mr. Chairman, got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Assuming the light goes in, okay, if you look between your two buildings, is there, right, is there enough space for a right out and a left-hand turn lane, or a straight turn lane to go across, turn back left? Doesn't look like to me there's enough space there to get a right in as you're going towards If I'm making myself clear.
This way?
Yes.
Coming in this way?
Yep.
And then the right out, and then the straight across?
Does traffic go back up there?
Yeah, I think in theory what that would be is, you come in this lane, and this, the lane out would be, it potentially might be a requirement for a left-out lane.
Right.
And a straight, and a straight across with a right turn lane.
Right.
And they, that may be something DOT comes back and makes us do as part of their analysis. And we obviously would be, we would want to do that, be happy to move the building later. I think that's what, part of the reason why Lee said we could end up shifting some of these buildings around, square footages around, to make sure whatever we do with DOT... Square footages around, to make sure whatever we do with DOT and/or whatever, whatever else we end up having to do, um, we can either reduce the square footage on one side or move it around a little bit more to, to try to accommodate that sort of...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? If not, uh, any of you gentlemen wanna speak? I mean, or address?
My name's George Baker, I'm just a partner Steve.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't want, I wanted to make sure they weren't dissidents, okay?
Dissident, dissident. Fantastic. Love that. I mean, dissidents.
Is there any discussion, or do I hear a motion at this point in time?
Yeah, I mean, the only discussion I'd have is, I would like to have some kinda condition that we do have some type of retail limit, whether it's a, a twenty thousand of the thirty-five thousand square feet be, you know, the, the commer, or, uh, retail, or ten thousand or, or something, so that we make sure that we have some kind of influx for that. And I know they have the restaurant there, and obviously that's gonna be retail.
Yeah, I'm happy to put in so, a limitation of, that ten thousand square feet could be office, uh, and the, and, and we have to have a minimum of twenty-five thousand retail, but you're good with that.
Is that, and I'm gonna be very candid with you, is that painted yourself in a corner too much?
Well, and that's, that, that's what I was saying, maybe just a, a minimal of twenty or something?
Hold on, I just like to page. Steve spoke on it earlier, and I don't exactly know how the ordinance is written in terms of definitions, but in my mind, the uses that are going into this are all, they're not like corporate office, it's neighborhood service and retail. And so it's restaurants, retail, and neighborhood service. And so it gets into the nuance of how you define office.
Right.
Because I do see that there would be some medical office uses that would serve the community, and how is that defined in the ordinance? And that's why I wanna not be painted into a corner.
Yeah, a, and I guess my only concern is I don't, I don't want that block to become Novant Health. Or, you know, something, you know, that kinda thing to it. What's that?
It's gonna go out by Waverly.
I know, I saw that.
What if we just limited it to, at least went to twelve thousand so we could make sure we covered any of those uses, and, and say we couldn't go over twelve thousand?
But, yeah, I mean, I, I was even saying, you know, fifteen thousand, you know, what the difference? Uh, you know, just, just so that we have some component to it that's re, you know? And I know you're saying you're gonna have restaurants, so that's gonna, you know, make the issue mute, or move.
It really fall, you know?
Right.
I can't make an example, but I don't wanna go back and say, oh, man.
No, and I get it, I get it.
It's not gonna be like, um, you know...
Bunch of attorneys.
A bunch of attorneys or, uh, you know, some corporate...
All right, so, just so I'm clear, uh, right, at this point in time, before an official motion's made, we're talking about a condition for a minimum of twenty thousand square feet of retail?
Yes.
Double, double to fifteen thousand square feet of office.
Excuse me.
Than twenty, than fifteen thousand square feet office, okay? Okay. Might be better to just say no more than fifteen thousand square feet office. Okay, well, 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 I'll make that the, the language. I just wanna make sure I was clear on it.
You're so close to, and I know we don't wanna defeat the purpose, 'cause we want it to be neighborhood-friendly and consumer-friendly, uh, with a fifty-fifty split, would that overburdened? Would that, would that be more than you would wanna do? Or y'all name a number, y'all say?
Fifteen, like you said.
I think we're good with the fifteen. I, I, we, we, this is gonna, we want it to be retail, and we intend for it to be the majority, so we're good with the fifteen thousand.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Will the chairman entertain a motion to approve?
I say.
What's that?
I got one more question. We keep, we keep saying restaurant with the drive-up window, what are we looking at? You keep saying that there's gonna be a drive-up window for, with a restaurant?
Well...
What kinda restaurant are we looking at?
We, we don't, we, in theory, we, you know, ba, based on the sort of interest level we've gotten back, we sort of think it might be a bank as opposed to restaurant, but it could be, and it could ultimately be a restaurant.
Are we talking like fast food restaurant, or?
It, it, in theory, yeah, it's a zone for the, the fast food restaurant.
That, that's what I was speaking to today. They actually, they went through a put amendment, they could build a fast food restaurant today without coming through.
Right, it's approved by Wright, I mean, by...
They, they have a put amendment in place right now for a fast food restaurant.
It's entitled?
Yeah, it's entitled.
All right.
Okay, so I had Rush, Ro, Roger made the motion, Russell, you second it?
Uh, they did. Uh, could you state the conditions and let them agree? And that be part of their motion?
Absolutely. So the, the condition, uh, for, um, recommendation of approval was no more than fifteen thousand square feet of office space out of the entire development.
And when you guys do this, just so we do it right, you really need to do two motions. You need to do a, a motion to, you, you, I think you got a, a motion right now to recommend approval. So you need to do a motion to recommend approval of the put amendment, and do that, and then do a motion to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning petition, because this will go up to the board as two separate items.
So moved.
And then Russell, you seconding on that one?
Yes, sir.
So we have two motions at this point in time. The first motion will be for the PUD rezoning, is that correct?
The PUD amendment.
The PUD amendment that will make way for us to approve all of this project here. Uh, is everyone clear on the first motion?
Right.
Yes, sir.
All right. No further questions, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And motion passes. We now have a motion on the floor, uh, by the same two co-conspirators, and it is approval of this.
A conditional rezon.
Conditional rezoning, as stated with the, uh, conditions as set forth for us. Is there any questions on that motion?
No, sir.
If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And motion passes. You announce.
Thank you, good luck.
Wish you luck. I think you're building a quality project out there, and, uh, uh, they're looking for a neighborhood-friendly situation.
I didn't hear, I...
I'm sorry?
Did you, did you vote?
Yeah.
Or did you?
Yeah, all in favor, yes.
All in favor, you announce.
It was all in favor.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we didn't, I didn't miss any, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before y'all are dismissed, you'd make my wife very happy if you made that restaurant a Portillo's out of Chicago.
If you get him to pass liquor by the drink, we might be...
You got another piece of property? Wrong board.
Thank you, gentlemen, good luck to you.
Thank you, good luck, thanks a lot.
Motion to adjourn, so we can turn, turn the box off.
I'll move to adjourn. But wait, do we have a, uh...
So we have a staff report?
Uh, we really don't have a staff report.
Okay, any comments?
We don't really have any brief comments. A motion of hearsay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.